Fifth at 5:33 PM. We have three topics tonight, so I'm going to turn it right over to City Manager Rodriguez so she can tell us what's on her agenda. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. So as Councilmember Supple mentioned, we have three topics tonight. The first one is a discussion about the Healthcare Savings Plan and the level with which councilmembers want to participate in that. It's all councilmembers need to participate or not at all. And I'll let our HR Manager Krista Guzman discuss that. We've got 15 minutes for that discussion. And then following that, we've got an update from our communications staff on the city newsletter. And then after that, we've got a presentation from Greater MSP. So HR Manager Guzman.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you all again virtually here. So wanted to introduce the topic today of the Healthcare Savings Plan account for the mayor and councilmembers. Currently, you all are contributing $75, which is about 15% of your salary as a councilmember to your biweekly wage deposited into your healthcare savings plan, sort of an automatic thing. It was brought up that one of the councilmembers have requested that this item be brought before the council for discussion to consider a possible decrease in that amount to $25, which is closer to 5% of your salary as a councilmember. And then just a reminder for the discussion today, if a majority of the council wishes to make an adjustment to the contribution, either by adjusting the flat rate or allocating a percentage of your biweekly salary, either one, then staff, myself, will include a resolution for adoption at a later council meeting. And I will also have to propose that to the state as well for an amendment to your plan. So I will, with that, open it up for discussion or any questions.
Go ahead, Councilmember Whelan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just say, I was the one who had brought this up as I was reviewing some of this. I think in a typical full-time job, this amount might make a little more sense. It felt like kind of a lot, given that we all know this is pretty low part-time. And so just wanted to see if other councilmembers had similar thoughts or strong feelings about it. I know personally, I also have an HSA, which is part of why I'm less inclined to be donating a lot, or not donating, contributing a lot to this. But I know other people's situations might be different, so I'm open to what others think.
I do not have strong feelings either way. I can live with either way with what the rest of the council wants to do. I think it's always good to put something away for retirement, but I'm fine either way.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
My preference would be to leave it the same, or I'm happy with where it's at, but if it makes a big difference to somebody else, that's fine. It would be fine to reduce it.
I have a question about that. So if some folks wanted to reduce it and some wanted to keep it, is there an option, since there's five of us, to do that on an individual basis, or you have to do it across the full council?
Yeah, thanks for the question. So it has to be done the same way for everybody in the plan, so there would have to be a majority vote to make a change either way. Otherwise, it could also be kept the same, depending on, you know, what the vote says.
Okay. Thank you for making that clarification. I'll just add, you know, I didn't realize that we had this as an option, but now it's making sense because I think I get it. I get something from them every year. I take it to my tax file, you know, for taxes. I just didn't connect exactly what it was for. I'll have to think about it more, and I know you need direction. I could go either way on this. And I know we don't have Councilmember Troutman either to get his opinion. Any additional comments? Councilmember Whelan.
I guess I'll add a little bit that I agree with what Councilmember Supple said, but this is not just a straight retirement plan, that it's a pretty specific one that has to go toward healthcare expenses. And if anyone else has an HSA, when you can spend your HSA and this sort of interfere with each other somewhat, like you can't do both in the same year or something along those lines. And so I would be open to, if it's even an option, contributing more to a more flexible retirement account of some kind, but since this one is fairly restrictive in how it can be used is part of why I brought it up and would be in favor of reducing the amount.
Thank you for that clarification. City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. I did have a chance to connect with Councilmember Troutman briefly today, and he expressed that he is fine to go with the group, whatever you decide.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Krista, could you speak to what Councilmember Whelan just said about the restrictions on use? Could you just let us? I've never attempted to use anything, so I don't actually know.
Sure. So I will do my best, although I will confess, I'm not an expert in the Healthcare Savings Plan account. I know I may have to also reach out to somebody at the state who administers the plan. But typically, for our employees, a Healthcare Savings Plan account such as this cannot be used until after employment. And so it's kind of like, you know, in a sense, a retirement package or a package that you can use for your healthcare-related costs after employment, after you're no longer a councilmember, and then can be used for any healthcare-related costs that you might have. I do know that there are potential limits to what can be used from the plan. For instance, if you still have an HSA, for example, you can't contribute to both of them up to certain amounts per year, and that may be what other councilmembers are thinking of for the limits on contributions. But I would have to check with the state to see what other types of limits that they have in place for how it can be spent.
Okay. But is your general understanding that, in terms of what it can be spent on, that it's similar to an HSA?
Yes, that's correct.
And just to confirm, the money stays with us. It's not like an HSA where it's like a use it or lose it kind of thing, right?
That's correct. Yep.
Okay. I guess, Councilmember Whelan, can I just ask, is the difference in the paycheck important, or is it just that you think this is an inefficient account? I would say personally, I don't have any HDHP, so I can't contribute to an HSA right now, and this is better than nothing, but like if you want more of your check, I am happy to support it if that's the case.
I think my main thing is, I'm just not sure. It's already like several thousand dollars, I think, and I've not been in office that long, and we don't get paid that much. It just feels like out of balance with like how little we're paid for this. And so, and then, two, it seems the tax benefits of it are not better than just a Roth IRA, except that, given that this is not our careers, I don't know that we will be doing this until we're 65. So retiring may be sooner than you would actually be using a Roth IRA, but it just seems like an overly restrictive account that I'm not sure I would use all of if it continues to accrue and would rather contribute that toward other current expenses or other forms of savings. I'll also add, I'd be open, 25 was a suggestion, if we want to meet in the middle and change it to 50, that I'm flexible.
I would be happy to support 50.
Okay. Oh, Councilmember Supple.
I would think 50 is reasonable.
All right, and I am fine with that as well. I can see both points, and I think it's just kind of how each person individually would want to use it and apply it. So it sounds like 50 is the consensus from the council on this item.
Is there anything you need from us on this item?
No, I don't believe so. City Manager Rodriguez, I don't know if you wanted to add, I would just need that the council has voted to change it to $50, and then I will follow up with the state to make that change, and then we'll make a resolution later as well for full adoption.
We're going to a council meeting for a vote, for a formal vote.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, HR Manager Guzman.
Thank you.
And then, City Manager, looks like the next item is the Richfield Newsletter, which I'm so excited about.
Yeah, we're right on time, too. We have communications staff, Neil Rowland and Kate Hedgeson here tonight to talk about the newsletter, which I've heard so many compliments about already.
Hi, everybody. Everyone knows who I am, but we're here to talk about the newsletter. We've only done one, so you know, we're moving on up. But I have to, all I'm going to say is that we came up with this idea, this is one of the things that I wanted to do since I started. You know how challenging it is sometimes with, you know, our current staff complement, but thankfully, I brought this to our communication specialist, Kate Hedgeson, and this has been a huge part of what she's been doing over the past six, eight months. So she did a fantastic job. She will explain everything to you because she knows about, you know, way more about it than I do. But with that, I will turn it over to Kate, but feel free to ask any questions or anything like that. She will be able to answer them along the way.
Yeah, yes. I will be able to answer them. All right, thanks. Neil's going to run the slideshow for us. So I know most of you, I'm Kate, I work with Neil, and then I also wear another hat at the city, and I am a housing specialist down in community development. But like Neil said, this is something we've talked about for a long time. COVID kind of put it on the back burner, and then this summer, we were finally able to run with it. Can you go to the next slide there, Neil? So where we're coming from is our current website has an e-notification system, but it's not very robust. The one we had previously was working better, and when we switched website providers, we saw the engagement and use of that e-notification system with our staff really decline. And so we knew we needed something new. We also need new ways to reach out to our residents, right? We have the Sun Current and our social media, and then kind of our traditional mailings, but we know that there's still people that aren't engaged. We want to reach out to them. We would love to have a consistent look across departments, because we have a lot of departments and a lot of people trying to get information out, and having that consistent look helps us be more legitimate, and it helps just look more professional. And then finally, we want to promote the good work that's going on at the city. We hear that from you and from residents, that they just don't know about that program, or they're really impressed when they talk to so-and-so at the city, and we want to really shine a spotlight on all that good stuff that's going on behind the scenes. So where we landed was with a product called GovDelivery, and it's a platform from the company Granicus, and it's the top platform for government media, or excuse me, government communications. Hennepin County uses it, Minneapolis, Bloomington, Burnsville, a host of other cities. One of the things they really are proud of is that they're very secure, very highly secure system. And then they also have a strong network, and you see on the graphic there on the slide just a sample of what that looks like. And what it means is when people subscribe to Richfield, they're referred to other kind of proximal subscriptions or other clients of Granicus. And so right now, if somebody signs up for a newsletter in Bloomington, they're going to push forward something that says, hey, do you want to subscribe to Richfield? And that's going to be really important with our kind of those amenities that draw people from other communities, things like the farmer's market with like Nature Center, Parks and Rec. And so that's one way we'll gain subscribers kind of outside our traditional Richfield residents. Excuse me. So what we're trying, what we're launching is this e-newsletter, the Richfield Recap. Neil gets props for starting that name, coming up with that name, and it's going to be a weekly newsletter, a bulletin. The tagline is "What You Missed and What You Need to Know." We're going to send it out on Thursdays, and for now, we're just compiling updates from across departments. Our goals to start are just to gain subscribers, get people reading this, increase open rates, and then showcase those city services. Our first newsletter went out last week, and it went to about 1,500 subscribers. That's a list we had from our current kind of notification list on our website, 1,500 subscribers. We had a 56% open rate, which is amazing. That's way better than Neil and I thought it would be, and so we're really excited about that. And hopefully this week, when the second one comes out, we'll have a similar open rate. So the way it'll work is once people subscribe to the Richfield Recap, then they're offered other topics as well. And those topics are based on existing newsletters or existing mailing lists that were kind of out there within the city. We can create more topics in the future if there's staff to manage it, right? We don't want to put out a topic and then have nobody send a newsletter for it, or put out a topic that's not going to get, you know, regular use. And so you can see here, this is the list of the topics we currently offer in addition to that Richfield Recap. Crime Alerts will go out as needed. Organics is run by Rachel, she's got a list for that. Parks and Rec is also, you know, got their own list that they use. The Rama Reporter is really interesting. It's a really small list. I think there's about 500 people on it, but it's for rental housing owners and managers. And this is a group of people that we've been reaching out to for years and years and years. Julie Urban runs this outreach effort. She's been trying her best to make Outlook email look nice, and she did a really good job, but she's thrilled to be using this platform now. She sent out her first newsletter earlier this month, and she had great response across the board, people contacting her about loans for apartment owners, about getting their clients on Section 8, et cetera, et cetera. Let's see. And additionally, we have the farmer's market, senior programming, snow emergencies, which again will be a big one we use on an as-needed basis, and then Wood Lake Nature Center, of Another feature of this that we're really excited about, and honestly, one of the reasons we went with Granicus, is they have the ability to text and to send messages out via text. We know from some other programs that we use that over 50% of our traffic on our website is coming from people on their mobile devices, and this is a way we can reach out to them directly to that mobile device and hopefully eliminate another step when them opening an email. You know, we'll just put it right in front of them. Texts, in theory, have a better open rate, but unfortunately, we can't measure them, which I think is kind of funny. So that 56% was only for email delivery of the newsletter last week, but we know that the text messages went out. We have, I think, about 700 people signed up to receive them via text. So you can add a text blast to any sort of outreach that you do through this platform. You could even send a text-only message, and it's a great way to just promote our programs and our Richfield Recap as well. You'll see here, I subscribed to Burnsville's a couple months ago just to see how they used it, and they push out a lot of text notifications for their Parks and Rec, for their events, things like that. And then you can see the text that went out last week with our newsletter. So our next steps are really just to promote this. We need your help doing that, and we're going to be trying to cover all the bases as we get people on board. All the website links on our site are updated, and they're all going to funnel people to the same spot to sign up. We're going to be continuing to promote it on social media and in all sorts of like print things that we do, so the annual report, water bills, maybe the rec brochure. And then I'm hoping as well to develop some sort of maybe postcard or some sort of small handout that we can put out at City Hall, or we can give to you and you can hand out at events. Finally, we have text to subscribe, and that's up and running now. I didn't have it yesterday, but it's ready now. So that's where somebody can text, like Snow, for instance, to the number that we have, and they'll be automatically subscribed to the snow emergency text messaging updates. But for right now, we're just going to try and get everybody to go to this friendly URL, richfield.mn.gov/subscribe, and we'll show you what it looks like. So on the next page, we have a link. So if you haven't subscribed yet, I think I put you all in with your city emails, so you should have gotten the Richfield Recap in your Richfield email last week. Oh, did we drop it, Neil? But you can always go in and sign up with your personal email if you want, or with your phone number as well. So Neil, can you put maybe your phone number in there? Thank you. So it makes it really easy. When you do this first page, that's subscribing to the Richfield Recap, and then on the second page, you can subscribe. Oh, he's going to go for all of them. All right. And that's automatically enrolling him with his phone number for the text messaging notifications for all those lists. Once you do this first step, then you're sent a text message or you're sent an email, and that lets you access the page where you can, you know, modify your subscriptions. You could unsubscribe from Rama if you're not going to, you know, need rental housing news or things like that. So that's kind of the main overview of how you would get there. There's a header that says subscribe on our website, there's a footer that says subscribe to city news, and then the main link lives under kind of that residents tab that's on the main header for our website. That's all I have. Neil, and I can totally answer any questions that you have.
I'm wondering, oh, perfect. Excellent. Now I can see everyone. Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
First off, I'm really excited about it. I got the first Richfield Recap last week, and it was a big improvement, and it looks awesome. The only thing that I saw in the signup flow you showed me that concerned me was like, is there a way to get directly, particularly to the snow alerts, without first signing up for the Richfield Newsletter? Because although I, as a councilmember, enjoy it, I think a lot of people might just want those snow alerts.
So we can build that into like the snow page, for sure, and that's something that we'll be adding to the website, is kind of like a, you know, pretty pop-up that would show up when people access different pages. And so one of the ways we're thinking about that is we're thinking about which pages have the most traffic. So right now, for instance, our ICE Arena webpage gets tons of traffic, like everybody is looking at what's going on at the ICE Arena. But to your point, for sure, we will be promoting, you know, a way to subscribe directly to that, and so it might be the text to subscribe, or we can think about pulling it out. That's a great suggestion. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Other comments or questions? Councilmember Whelan.
Thank you. Yes, I emailed within like 30 minutes of getting it that this is awesome. I've been looking forward to something like this since joining council. I think, yeah, just really exciting all around, really well done. I love the design of it. It looks great. It is very functional. It's like the right length to keep people's attention. So overwhelmingly glowing news. My one hiccup that I wanted to ask about is the texting. When I first got the link, I clicked it and it didn't work, and I just found it again, and I clicked it, and it took me to Medline Plus. And so it says it's still powered by GovDelivery, but I wonder if they reuse those links after a while? So anyway, just would, I don't need to get into the weeds on that, but I hope that we can get that working for the next time so that the text links work.
Yeah, I know the like manager subscription link didn't seem to work for me when I looked at it. I did get sent to the Richfield Recap, so I'll check that with our, you know, account person.
Thank you. Councilmember Supple.
I would just like to echo everyone's praise here. This is really awesome, and I appreciate it. It was very well done and had a lot of really useful information in one place instead of having to go to the last different webpages or look for things. So I think that's kind of like a one-stop shop, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. I'll just add, I'm so excited. I love the idea. We have a phenomenal communications team. I just can't believe the amount of exceptional work that comes out of our communications team. So thank you so much, Neil, and thank you, Kate. I know our residents already love it. I've gotten great feedback on it, and I'm super excited for it. I'm signed up through my cell and my email. And then just a couple ideas I was thinking of. So maybe, I know we get so many cute and neat and heartwarming thank yous from the community to our city staff, and I love how the city manager puts that, thank you, you know, thank you Thursdays, but maybe that's just something that can go in there so that our residents can see, you know, they're engaging and thanking the city for the work that they do because our staff go above and beyond constantly, and just personalizing that connection between our city staff and our community. Since we're already getting those awesome accolades and little notes, I just, you know, that could be something that might be added, just a thought. And then another idea for the future, I know capacity is such a huge issue, but I know since we have such a large community of Spanish speakers, if there was some option in the future, especially for things like the snow emergencies or something in Spanish where it's key information, specifically in Spanish, given our demographics of Richfield, that might be something to think about for this newsletter, since it has, you know, great snippets of important information about the city. So those are my only two ideas, but I'm super thankful and excited, and I know the community is too.
You're very welcome. We appreciate all the input.
Councilmember Whelan.
I was just going to ask, I think, I mean, I don't know how many people listen all the way to the end of our council meetings, but wanted to lift this up and hats off. Is the text to subscribe, is that like an easy number, or is it like different numbers and words for each possible option? And I should just say the website.
It's like a 10-digit number, I think. So I could get you the information for next week, maybe, or for the next meeting in a couple weeks.
Okay.
And yeah, we'll see if we can iron that out and make it really easy. But yeah, otherwise, the richfield.mn.gov/subscribe, probably the best way to do it.
And just before we wrap up, I think there's two big things that we should probably hit on that I think is important. One, I know that Councilmember Whelan has an electronic newsletter that he uses through, I think, like MailChimp. And it's interesting to point out that usually for government industry, the open rate for something like this is usually between about 25 and 28%, and that's why, and I found this based on MailChimp, a piece of information a while back in the day. So 56% compared to 28 of what you're supposed to expecting, like, is really outlandish. Like, you know, these things are the, almost for some people, I don't think so, but equated to junk mail for a lot of folks. So the fact that like, you know, that we got the reach we did with almost 1,000 people, I would say, is like something that really is very, very big, at least in our industry. And the last thing, and this is interesting, I never thought that this would save us money, and I'm not saying it will in the long run, but I think it might become almost budget-neutral because the other different departments all had their own programs, and we started getting, Kate can attest this more than I can, but like, we started getting phone calls, we're like from like the rec department saying, oh, we use this program. It costs us like 1,500 bucks a year or something like that. Can we stop using that and just use this, you know, get on board? So as I said, we're centralizing everything branding-wise, but like, I really think that by the end of this, with some of the departments, you know, getting rid of some of their accounts, whether they're big or small, this might become like, I was, the expense isn't huge, but like, you know, anytime we bring on something new with us being, you know, primarily funded through franchise fees, we're worried with about every dollar, but if this can be, you know, budget-neutral or close to with all of the different departments using it and also getting us to a similar brand, I think it really will be, you know, it's a nice thing that happened, but we didn't see it coming, and I think it's something that's kind of exciting as well.
Thank you. And to wrap us up, I'll pass it to City Manager Rodriguez if there's anything you want to wrap up with or to just open up the next session.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I was going to open up the next session. I saw Peter on earlier. We have, tonight, we've invited Greater MSP to present, and President and CEO Peter Frosch is here to present to you all and introduce Greater MSP. I've been following their work since I was on my council, and they do just really good work at the regional level to make sure that we are economically thriving and a competitive region, and tracking all of that in a dashboard that I really admire, and I think it's important that we look at this and study it as we embark on our own strategic planning process. So with that, Peter, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, great. It's nice to see you, Katie. It's nice to see you, Mayor.
Well, great. It's nice to see you, Katie. It's nice to see you, Mayor. You and I had a great conversation, I think it was back in 2020. But I remember that great conversation about Richfield and where the city was and where it was headed. It was very compelling and inspiring, um, story that you told and that stuck with me. So it's great to be with you. I, I have a few slides that I think somebody has access to. I don't have a lot of teams sharing confidence. I'm pretty good on Zoom, uh, but I didn't really want to be held responsible for that. So I sent that over to the team. You know, I appreciate the invitation to be with you tonight and maybe just provide a quick overview what GRS is all about and then just have a conversation. First line. So there's something like Greater MSP in every major US metro. And it's a cross sector, one team approach. Where leaders and organizations to come together to do the big things that they can't do alone. So it doesn't matter if you're Hennepin County or Cargill or University of Minnesota. There are things that matter to your strategy and your future that you either are not best suited to do, or there's just no way you can do by yourself. And Greers Peace Focus is the Regional Economic Development Partnership is about building the next generation economy, making us more globally competitive, creating great jobs for the residents that live in this metro region and creating an inclusive. Next slide. So when I say region, and that word's going to come up a lot tonight. This is what we're talking about. The 15 county MSA or Metropolitan Statistical Area. Maybe this is old hat for all of you, but this is how the federal government defines our region. And this is a shape that nobody really knows. We understand the shape of Minnesota and you probably know your county. You all know the shape of your city, but this is the shape of our economy. And it includes two counties in Western Wisconsin. And the rest of the counties in Minnesota are defined as a part of the metro based on the number of commuters that you into this core metro. So Malax was added, Lassure was added in the recent census because over 20% of their residents commute into the rest of the metro to, um, work. And we'll see how all that shakes out in the post pandemic world of, um, different thinking about commuting and where we live to work. But that's how the federal government defines an MSA. And economic development is based on sectors of strength, building on what you're good at to do more of it. And one of the things that has made this region consistently prosperous over a number of generations is that we have multiple, not just one, but multiple economic sectors of strength. And so typically, you know, something's kind of contracting or going through transition. And then there's some other sector in our region that will be expanding. And so people traditionally have moved, um, like across industries. And that's created a lot of stability and continuity in our economy. This is kind of the secret sauce. It's very difficult to create broad based economy like this. But once you have it, it has a lot of benefits. But that's, you know, doing more of what we're doing, um, is, is kind of the core of the idea. Next slide. So what is this all about? So the Greers Peace Partnership involves over, last year, we had over 600 individuals involved, over 350 organizations involved. There are 120 investors in Greater MSP. And we're all working to create a region that leads the world in inclusive economic growth. The mission, um, the core mission hasn't changed over the 10 years that Greater MSP has existed. It's about accelerating regional competitiveness, but there's more focus than ever before on the kind of quality of that growth. And this idea that we need to grow together, we need to make full use of the, the potential of every person living in our region. And that's not, we understood as like a trade off, like, well, we need to grow and we need to innovate, but we also need to find ways to include. That's synergistic. You know, we grow faster, we innovate better when everybody is engaged in the economy at his or her full potential. And that's not a dream. That's actually how it works. And so that's what we're focused on. And then there are set of values that unite the work that we do together in this partnership. Next slide. So, you know, in the spirit of naming names, this is a quick look at some of the investors who fund the work of the Greers Peace Partnership. It's intentionally heavy on the private sector, but it is very much a cross sector partnership. So cities and counties are investors in this partnership. We have the major philanthropies as well. And then on the bottom right, you know, the way that the work gets done is in close partnership with a number of other civic organizations, chambers of commerce, the MAC, you know, which is obviously very important to Richfield. Center for Economic inclusion, Regional Council of Mayors, others, Metropolitan Council, to Katie's earlier point. And, you know, it's, it's about finding ways that, you know, to work together to kind of like maximize the scale. Next slide. I will do some follow ups to this, but, um, I will send you a link to a virtual event that we held just last Thursday. And it's in segments and it's, it's kind of fun and it's interesting. And it was for all of the participants of the Greers Peace Partnership in 2021. So we invited the six or 700 people who were actively involved and told stories about what is Greers P now because it's grown a lot and here's how it works. And here's where we're focused and here's what we accomplished in 21 and here's some of the big ideas in 2022. That is fresh off the press. And love, you know, if you're interested or, you know, having a slow night, take a look at some of these segments. And they do a really great job of illustrating some of the progress that we're making. See stories about, um, you know, new companies that we've expanded in the region, about how we worked together to bring the first black owned bank in the history of Minnesota to Minneapolis-St. Paul last year and what we're going to do as a result of that, along with other, you know, really exciting projects. Next slide. You know, Board of Directors, you know, there's a very important body, you know, Greers P. And we have staff and we have leadership councils, um, in each of our kind of core areas of work. So at this point, we have a board of over 40 and we have a staff of 25 and we have, um, 80 other leaders involved in leadership councils. And so we've been expanding to get to the scale that it takes to really achieve impact in the region. And there are a lot more people involved in Greers P than there ever have before, which we're really excited about. Next slide. You know, how do we focus our work? Like, what are we working toward? There is an economic development strategy that's been developed over the course of seven or eight years. And this is the simplest way to reflect that strategy that has kind of nine areas of focus. And you'll see here are things that matter a lot to cities like job growth and housing affordability and transportation mobility and racial inclusion. And things that may or may not be surprising to see in a regional economic development strategy like the climate economy. But there again, just like as we think about racial inclusion as a way to accelerate our growth and innovation, coming up with solutions to global climate change here, uh, we seize a great opportunity to grow companies and create opportunity. So all of the projects that we're doing, all the work goes back to this. It's about executing on this strategy. Prior to Greers P, um, there was no plan. So, you know, one of the challenges in this region that's really different from Atlanta or Seattle or Chicago, where you have a one big city and you have one big county, as you all know, we have dozens of cities. We have a dozen counties. And that can make it challenging to come together and kind of get the critical mass to drive things forward. And so having a shared strategy for how we want to develop the economy is even more important in this region. Next slide. They talked a little about structure. So on the right, you see kind of board and staff. And then we developed the, what we call platforms, uh, Make an MSP and Forge North and Embold and Business Investment. These are, um, where we have teams of people and leadership councils and the know-how and resources to actually get big things done. And on the left hand side, you can see the scope of Greers P. It's actually about job creation and capital investment. It's about talent retention, attraction. It's about startups. You know, we are, we're not about everything, um, but we are interested in everything that is key to our economy. And there's a research and intelligence box there that I want to come back to because, um, Greers P has access to a lot of economic modeling and research that could be useful to Richfield. Uh, when you're making decisions or working with businesses that might, um, expand, we can come back to that. Next slide. Um, just to give you a sense of, you know, how is Greers P different from, you know, other groups in the region? We have a global reach. So we are working for Richfield and all the other cities and counties around the country and around the world. The COVID-19 put a little bit of a wet blanket on our global plans, but we have been doing a lot of this work virtually. And then I had the opportunity to go on the governor's trade mission. November, it was in the UK and Finland. They're selling Minneapolis-St. Paul and Minnesota as a location for companies to expand. One of the bottom lines there is cities that have sites that are ready for development or have buildings that are, are ready for occupancy. Those cities are positioned, um, to capture that economic opportunity and bring more jobs to your city. So we can circle back to that. Next slide. And when we work together, we win big. You know, hundreds of project wins, billions of dollars investment, tens of thousands of jobs. That's the idea that by playing together, we have a bigger impact, bigger things. And so the scale of our ambition as a region has continued to grow as more and more people have come into this space and said they want to work together. And so the projects, um, you know, keep getting more ambitious, which is exactly what we need to be doing, right? Next slide. Maybe I'll just stop here, but you know, it's like, how is the economy doing is a question that Greers P exists to help answer. And so Katie mentioned the MSP indicators dashboard, which is an annual look, competitive look at how we're performing against other places around the, the country and against ourselves. We've been doing that annually since 2015. And COVID hit, we said, um, the dashboard is useful, but it's, it's not going to tell us on a week by week basis how things are going. And that's suddenly the need. So just like you had to pivot and do all kinds of new things starting in 2020, we put together a new regional recovery hub. And this is not what the hub looks like, but these are the things that we're measuring. So as of, um, the last number of months, this has been stable as a trend since the summer. We've been improving and all of these measures that we've been tracking in the recovery hub. And I'll send you the links to that. And then we've been going in the wrong direction on cases and on housing affordability. But generally, you know, we used to talk a lot about economic recovery. And we, we really in a different place now. I mean, we are in an economic expansionary period. And the language is not even keeping up with the reality. I looked at the unemployment rates, the latest information for Richfield at Hennepin County, uh, before joining you tonight. And in November 21, as you may know, rituals unemployment rate was 2.2%. It was 2.2% in Hennepin County and the same in the region. 2.2% is effectively zero. And that's among the lowest unemployment rates we had seen in the previous 10 years. So we are kind of in an economic moment that no one would have predicted in 2020. Where we have this very strong demand. There's not enough, you know, businesses are struggling to find workers, you know, hungry for places to expand. And so it's, it's a better version of the future than we would have imagined in 2020, but it creates its own challenges. And so I'm really interested to talk with you, learn more about what you're seeing in your city and what opportunities you might be interested in, in trying to go after. And what questions Greers P might be able to help you answer is, is partners in that work. So we could probably, there's more, but I'll just stop because it's getting late and it's like more interesting to talk.
Great. Thank you so much for that presentation. Um, I wanted to open it up to council and see if there's any comments or questions folks have. Can't see everybody.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Councilmember Supple.
Go ahead, Councilmember Supple.
I liked the fact that you were focusing on inclusive economic development. Can you say more about that?
Sure. So we, one way to think about that is, is we look at the census figures that came in 2020. Our region grew by almost 400,000 people in the previous decade, which is really great. We grew faster than San Francisco. We grew faster than Boston, which is significant. The white population grew by like 1.7%. And our populations and communities of color grew by 60%. So like, there are a lot of other ways to answer that important question, but maybe the simplest way to answer is we are, it's not the future. This is the present. We are a much more diverse racially diverse, um, community than we've ever been. We, this is how we're growing. These are the people that we are. And if we are going to compete and be successful, we, we are going to have to evolve quickly to be a place that creates, that creates economic opportunity and does a far better job quite quickly in creating access to that opportunity for more people than have had access in the past. And the idea of inclusive economic growth is like, that's everybody's business. That's not some nice to have or it's an add on or, um, you know, that's for the DEI leader. That's just core strategy. And so, you know, so what, give me an example of like, so how does that influence the kind of thing? Something we announced in that video that I referenced the, the benefit from last week. There's a big effort that Greers P is going to be leading starting this year called Business Bridge. And no one's really heard of this. It's, it was created during the great recession by the Atasca Project. And some procurement leaders in some big companies, who are rarely the heroes of any story, got together and they said, you know, I think we could probably try to buy more stuff from small, medium sized companies in Minnesota. And if we did, it would probably help stabilize job growth in small business. So they just buy themselves, nobody has to do it. There's no funding. They didn't have staff. Those big companies, US Bank, Medtronic, Target. They just started working together with some intention to buy more stuff. And by 2017 and 2018 and 2019, they were buying collectively $3 billion more every year. Small, medium sized businesses in Minnesota. That's like 1% of our gross regional profit. That's a big deal. It's probably like the most successful economic development program ever and no one's ever heard about it. And so we started talking to these folks a couple of years ago and said, you know, that's pretty amazing. Like, do you like some help? Like, what if we did more of that? And they said, sure. You know, like, we're just doing this by ourselves. And so we came up with a plan to double the number of big companies participating. Built a digital exchange to facilitate exchange, work with a bunch of chambers. And others who work with small, medium sized businesses to aggregate the supply, that which is the trickier part, and put more intention around buying from BIPOC, small, medium sized business. So what we're doing is we're, we're making a market at scale. And we ran the numbers and those companies said, you know, if we double the number of big companies that participated, we could increase our annual purchasing, this from BIPOC owned, small and size business by $500 million a year. So it's like, that's inclusive economic growth. And we know that the problem is going to be that there aren't enough. So as we get this going in 2022, we're in the middle of hiring a director and we're putting it all together. There's a lot of work that will be done in the first number of months on making sure that every, um, BIPOC owned, small and sized business gets connected to this. And there's an understanding, we'll have to do some pipeline development too. So in parallel, what can we all do to create more small and sized business? So that's an example of a pretty complex project that's at a very big scale. That's market moving. I mean, that could truly change communities. And once we get it going, there's no reason that it would ever have to stop. So, you know, we're excited about that and that's the kind of big stuff. And like frankly, very hard things. We only do the hard stuff that Greater MSP is focused on.
Thank you. Other comments or questions from council members? Councilmember Whelan?
At the risk of being a broken record to my colleagues, I'll share with you that one of the things I really care about is housing affordability. That is one of the two things that we're getting worse. And I mean, I appreciate a Councilmember Supple's question that I think anytime we talk economic growth, I think it's important to ask that question of growth for who? And I, just knowing that around housing, it is most impacting rental units. And we have one of the, if not the worst, homeownership disparities in the country between whites and people of color. And so I guess I was curious to hear a bit more if there's specific programs on that front or what that work looks like to try and address that. Because I would hope that is something that we as a whole region can keep collaborating on.
So I think that the beginning of that is, so Katie mentioned the indicators dashboard. So the first thing is to see the issue, right? And to identify the issue as important. And so a number of years ago, we amended the dashboard to include measures of housing affordability. So back when we started in 2015, I'll be honest, like, no one in 2015 was talking about housing affordability. Like, at least in economic development. It was just not something that was part of the dialogue that we were part of. Obviously, it's always been a focus in community development, but it just had not been part of the economic development conversation. And that changed very quickly. And you get to the end of the last decade and, you know, San Francisco is losing population. They were losing population before the pandemic. And that has everything to do with the fact that no one can afford to live there. And that's, that point matters because you have to think of like, what's the aim? Like, what are we trying to do? What kind of economy are you trying to create? Well, you have to create a place that people can afford to live at multiple levels of income. That has to be part of the goal. And there are two ways to do that. One, people have to make more money. So that's a really important part. And you have to have housing at multiple levels of affordability. So we started tracking the issue and benchmarking. And it's interesting and important to note that relative to other, or the peers that we track, Seattle, Chicago, Atlanta, Portland, Boston, we perform relatively well compared to those other places. The point that's key there is this is an America problem. Right? Every major US metro was struggling deeply. Some places in really intractable ways with this issue. We have the ability to really solve it. You know, we're not so deep in it, we're not so behind the curve in Minneapolis-St. Paul that we can't really make great strides and get really close to where we need to be. Not every region's there. Some places are like really deep in the hole. So housing at every level of affordability matters. Affordable housing, if we're talking about like maybe workforce housing to 30% AMI, it's deeply affordable. You know, that's where the economic development conversation and community development conversation really need to be coming together. There are some efforts now that I think will become public in a few months that I think could be really breakthrough when it comes to this issue. And part of that answer is going to be just capital. Assembling a lot more capital, you know, not like millions, but maybe billions around investing in housing construction. So where Greater MSP is play, you know, we measure, we work to define that into what success is for a region. And we'll be involved in some of the capital solutions that are necessary so we have funding to really make some strides. And you raised homeownership, which is critically important. And it's different, right? Like, sometimes it just gets wrapped up. We have like a racial homeownership gap and we have affordable housing challenge. Well, those are both important, but the solutions look quite different. And you know this, but I mean, St. Paul, for instance, which had a pretty challenging result in the election, led to rent control. It's going to be really hard for the next couple of years potentially. So we're talking and saying like, maybe there's an opportunity to do something on homeownership that's really positively disruptive. Because condos don't, what just happened doesn't apply to condos. So care about it a lot, working behind the scenes. Hopefully there'll be some, you know, big things to talk about in the next couple of months. But I'd be really interested to learn like, what's going on in Richfield? What are you seeing? What might be helpful?
So maybe I'll jump in here because it's kind of continuing the conversation around affordable housing that Councilmember Whelan was talking about. So I would say in terms of, in Richfield, maybe in some ways, we were the canary in the coal mine within 2015 with the largest mass displacement of low-income renters in Minnesota with the displacement of Crossroads at Penn that became concierge. And then we almost had it happen a few years later. And so we have been experiencing this issue quite a bit in Richfield. And simultaneously over those years and in the recent history, we've been named the best suburb to live in, you know, the hottest housing market multiple years in a row because we do have that level of affordability for a lot of what people might consider their first home, starter homes, however you want to think of it. But we have traditionally been very affordable. We are quickly, and since 2015, you know, like I said, that was the first big shock to our community and I would say regionally and even, you know, statewide and nationally with the displacement of our community members at Crossroads. And the displacement, we just lost so many children, so many families, so many community members that we still haven't been able to recuperate and rebuild. And that was really the impetus of, you know, several of us who are in office now, but also a lot of the affordable housing policy work that we've been fighting for and have put changes into place at the state, at Richfield level, but also have been working with Mike Howard at the state level to work on that. So one thing I would say, when we talk about affordable housing and is we, and this is what we see in Richfield, but it is what we're seeing across the state. If we don't put more funds to maintain, preserve and improve the existing affordable housing, you know, we're just, we're leveling and getting rid of affordable housing that oftentimes is in poor conditions and replacing it with affordable housing that's not affordable and accessible to anybody. So whatever, and that is the pathway to becoming the next Seattle, the next, you know, San Francisco. And so we've been experiencing that in Richfield and doing what we can, simultaneously looking at ways to give down payment assistance, you know, to increase and encourage homeownership. But when that home in Richfield becomes increasingly less accessible, yes, it's going to help to give $20,000 to folks, but still a rambler, that's $325,000 to purchase and multiple bidding, you know, bids for that house. And so, and you know, that's one thing that we experience. We'd love to be a part of that work. It's something that we've been working on for several years. And unfortunately, it came out of the impetus of a very hard situation that we experienced in Richfield with Crossroads at Penn. And then I wanted to add a couple of other things. And I think we've talked about this before, but just like housing is a foundational piece to drive the economic engine of our region, so is childcare and meeting the childcare needs. And so how is Greater MSP thinking about accessibility of quality childcare that's affordable for our workers, for our families? You know, I think I have my brother and his family leaving the Twin Cities because they can't afford to live here anymore. And it's primarily because they can't find affordable childcare. And I hear that story from a lot of people. So that's one area that, you know, I'd love to hear more about and also be a part of the solutions. And then you talked about this already, but I hear a huge need for just pipeline development in the tech and data space. And I know that that's something that we're working on. But just building, you know, the STEM leaders of tomorrow and today in our BIPOC communities, I see that as a huge need when people come to me for what they're needing, the capabilities that they need to grow their businesses. And it seems to be one of the areas of need. And then I'll ask one question, but I just wanted to take a pause if anyone wanted to say anything to those items.
There's no questions about housing, but I want to let him respond to your childcare question.
I don't have much to say about childcare other than totally get it. I mean, it's hugely, huge issue statewide, nationwide, right? And I think fundamentally, it's not that hard to understand what's going on. I mean, it's someone who has young children and was like recently paying for childcare. Like, the economics of childcare don't work. You know, it's like, if you expected elementary school to like pay for itself, there'd be a lot of problems, right? And that's what we see with three and four and some five-year-olds, down to infants. So it's the economic model, you know, people don't get paid enough. And I think that this requires a level of non-incremmental solution. And this is kind of, I think we're, I don't know, governor, other folks need to say like, we need to rethink this. And we probably need to have a different kind of relationship with families and parents. I mean, not to get like policy space, but I think that's where the solution is. You know, it's not a couple of dimes and pennies here, like, it's just not working. It's not even close to working. And my wife and I were able to pay what it costs for really great childcare and it was insane. And we were thinking like, why does anybody do this? So yeah, I mean, I have a lot of heart for this issue and we need, it's a human issue and we need solutions. And I think there need to be big solutions.
Definitely. And I know we are a group here in Richfield. We have spoken to the governor and the lieutenant governor multiple times and there's been efforts. But again, they need to be huge efforts. But I know that there's interest in corporate spaces as well. And how could they look at their supports for employees and employee benefits differently? So there could be, you know, creative conversations there with some of your stakeholders. And then the last question I wanted to ask is, given Richfield, our location, our size, everything you know of Richfield, you know, I saw that, and I know Egan is very involved. We're very different from Egan. You're not going to build a big, you know, football training center in Richfield. We were fully built out in the 60s, we're seven square miles. We have an exceptional location, we're a great community to live in, we're close to everything. You know, what from your perspective with Greater MSP do you see as a key opportunity or key opportunities for Richfield?
I think it's about, like, we obviously work with Minneapolis-St. Paul quite a bit and had heard for a lot of years, well, we're built out, so there aren't these greenfield areas. Well, yes and no, right? So I think it's about then getting really granular and looking for opportunities to assemble parcels. I mean, it's like, how do you increase the value of spaces? You don't. But many places don't. So it's just a different kind of approach. And, you know, that's a good follow-up. I mean, that's something where what we need in this region are more ready sites that are big enough. That's why the assembly kind of comes into play. So it's not like a half acre here and an acre here, but you've got something to work with. We could help you understand maybe what some of the most competitive industries would be based on. I mean, you've got amazing transportation, I mean, it's transportation, right? It's like airport, highway, it's like workforce. If you think about it that way, it's like, well, what are the industry sectors that would be really high value and wouldn't take, you know, a million square feet? We don't want a distribution center necessarily, that's not going to be like the highest value space. But one of the things we're seeing a huge amount of activity on is advanced manufacturing. And this is like a really good story that has yet to totally get out there. But Minnesota is well-placed to compete for advanced manufacturing. By that I mean, not low-skill, low-wage, high-volume manufacturing. So it might be 50 people or 100 people or 200 people in a location. And it's a building that probably has a lot of high-value tech in it. And so these are good jobs and stable jobs with benefits and not take an enormous footprint, but would require the transportation networks presumably that Richfield has. So we have a ton of demand right now in this region. We're working nationally, internationally. And so looking for sites where old buildings might be repurposed. And then this gets geopolitical. I mean, we're truly seeing, I had a meeting about this this week, what's going on in China with COVID policies, with where the regime is going, is leading decision-makers right now in real time. They are starting to bring things back. What we were seeing prior to the last, I would say, three or four months is something I'd call pre-shoring. I'm just making that up. But it's like, rather than bringing something back, it's something that would have gone overseas before, doesn't, it stays in the US. So this is a huge opportunity for Minnesota. Our tax policy actually puts us in a good position for this because Minnesota tax laws do not tax the property within the building. So in other states, you have to pay for the robots in your taxes. You don't in Minnesota. And so I would say that's something to consider. You know, there's not as much office activity going on, there's some, but we're not going to see that come back for a while. But RND, research and development, advanced manufacturing are really big opportunities. I think about the airport, trucking, rail, that would be a good follow-up.
Great, thank you. And Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, I know you had a question.
Yeah, I guess I was just curious, going back, you made a reference to the St. Paul rent control thing with affordable housing. Minneapolis, we don't know for sure, but might do something as aggressive as the St. Paul policy. I guess I'm curious what you think as cities that, you know, sincerely share the concern about the loss of affordability. But at least I personally do not agree with that approach of, I'm on the mandate for property owners. What should we do and what do you expect suburbs and sort of the rest of the region to do to react if Minneapolis and St. Paul both have a really strict rent control policy?
Well, I think that's going to undermine the goals. Ultimately, I mean, in St. Paul. And it's, we understand that impetus is a solution, very problematic. I mean, the fact that it didn't, aside from the process, right? And as city council, it's like to have something that binding, that provides no flexibility for, you know, structure or anything else. So there are so many other ways to go about that and there are so many potential solutions. I'm kind of curious, like, what have you entertained or where have you looked? Or, you know, is, you know, mayor, I don't know if the regional council of mayors has been, I assume, had been talking a little bit about this in recent months.
I mean, I would say on our baseline, it's the income-based affordability stuff that corresponds to like, you know, 80%, 60% and lower AMI limits for a portion of the buildings. We have not required it in fully self-funded projects, only in projects that are subsidized by us, which I think is good in a way because then we're kind of partnering in the cost of providing affordable housing. It's not just expecting it and making a property on or past that cost under the other tenants or the money they're losing. But this still doesn't really address the thing that has really driven that political momentum in St. Paul and Minneapolis of feeling like all rent is increasing too aggressively and unpredictably. And I don't, I'm actually not aware of any solutions we've formally investigated or am I aware actually of the scope of the problem or, I don't have Richfield-specific data on how rent has changed year-over-year.
I mean, prior to the pandemic, it was going up at like 4.2, 4.25% on an annualized basis across the region, which, I mean, to like put the 3% in relationship, right? So like, the market before the pandemic, which, you know, those pressures have gone up, you know, far exceeded this limit that's been imposed. And it's, I don't think, the market's not bluffing. I mean. You know, these, a lot of these buildings won't be built. Unless, and, and what is that going to do? I mean, we just, there can be less units. And so. You know, there's an income side of this equation, but what can we do so people make more money? There's some positive things happening in wages, but that's also about scaling and it's about connectivity jobs. But as unit production, right? I mean, we just, we need, need more units. And then, I mean, homeownership, I mean, moving families that qualify. And are interested in homeownership in, into homes. You know, can't probably should be part of that solution as well. I mean, it's a portfolio approach.
Councilmember Wayland?
I just, I wanted to circle back and you, you just did to that, that side of it that is based on income. And I, I don't expect you to necessarily have a, a quick answer to this and imagine this tension exists in Greater MSP. But some of the, some of your primary members are chambers of commerce. And my understanding is that they are often the strongest opponents of workers' rights and increased wages. And, and those kinds of public policy decisions at the state level. And so I. We're not going to address that in a couple of minutes, but I, I guess I would. Urge if it's not happening already, further conversation within the group that. That the policies for, for workers and worker protections, increased wages, like those are public policy decisions that we. We can make that would help people. And that some of the business interests are often the people lobbying against those. And feel that that's an important part of the conversation too.
I take the point. But I'm in a good position. Like the chambers aren't members of Greater MSP. They're, you know, we work with them on other things, but. We don't pay Greater MSP any money. So we, we are, and we don't, Greater MSP doesn't lobby. I mean, we create jobs. And so we create economic opportunity and we work to increase, you know, wage opportunity. And so last year, for instance, 16 wins and 1,400 jobs associated with those wins. They all paid on average of $50,000 above with benefits. I mean, these are all like great jobs. And we've been in a position of working with clients who, you know, want to come into market and they've got projects that they want to build. And, you know, their wages, we started doing something we hadn't before in the last couple of years when they say, you know, our starting wage we're looking at is, you know, $13 an hour. They're like, you know what? Don't even waste your time. And don't even bother coming into this market if you're not going to be at least at 15. And by the end of last year, we're saying, you probably need to be talking about $20 an hour. These are jobs with like. No barriers to entry, no requirements, you know, like essentially low skill jobs at 15 or 20 dollars an hour. Often with benefits. And so we are, I'm totally with you. I mean, we're. For, for the clients that we're working with, when we bring companies here, we want them to be successful. And to get worker, they have to be, get workers to be successful and they have to pay competitive wages. And so, you know, we're not writing the news. We're just kind of reporting and saying like, this is what's going on here. We want you to be here. And we really want to work to expand jobs here, but. You know, to be successful, you're going to be competitive.
I do want to give us some transition time before a council meeting. So I wanted to ask, are there other comments or questions? This has been a, an awesome presentation. Thank you so much. We appreciate Greater MSP doing the work that you're doing. And coming to us every year and presenting. And, you know, trying to figure out how we can continue to partner with you to make Richfield a part of that attractive regional solution. So are there other comments or questions from the council members?
I would appreciate the time and the ability to check in. We have a research department that exists to, you know, help answer all kinds of questions and. We have access to modeling that, you know, the state doesn't even have, designing resources. So, you know, feel free to reach out. And then mayor, maybe we could follow up on this federal funding hub. We didn't talk a lot about tonight. I don't know how much you might be connected to that, but starting last summer, when we heard from counties and cities that. Like, what do we do about ARPA? You know, how do we make the most of this? You know, there are like hundreds of us kind of asking the same questions. Greater MSP stood up a federal funding hub. There's a website that's now live. Make sure you get the access to that. It's got like consolidating resources and everything. There's an email that goes out once a week that's just provide like, here's what's going on, connectivity, opportunity, latest things. And then there, there's a staff level meeting that takes place and an elected meeting. The next elected meeting is February 9th. This is just about connectivity and transparency. So everybody can, you know, be smarter faster. So, you know, if, if Richfield hasn't fully jumped into that, it was just strongly encourage you to do so.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, we appreciate getting a follow up email with that information and we can connect on staff and or council members attending.
Sounds great. But thanks for tuning for our region.
Thanks. Have a great night. Thank you for coming. Good night. Okay, that is our last item on our work session. So I will adjourn our meeting and I'll save the ten minutes for our city council meeting.